An agenda.
I've just started the recording now, Marcus, is that okay?
Yep, that's it. Okay. I'll start again then for the recording. So we have got an agenda that we're going to put up on the screen or not an agenda, a presentation. I'm aware Jackie that there was an agenda put forward late last week to us with which was a series of questions. What I'm hoping is that the presentation that we do today will will help you understand what our role is, will probably help you answer some of those questions and it'll also help you reformat where the questions should be reformatted to fit in line with what our duties are, if that makes sense. But the overriding thing that I wanted to personally get across today was that the County Council has gone through some huge changes in for the flood risk team in recent times in the last year or so. And it is a brand new flood risk team set up a completely different way with with me involved in that. And what I'm trying to do is, if you like, reset relationships with the likes of Bersko Town Council and to make sure that we have better working relationships going forward for for everybody really, for for the councillors, for the people on the town council, for the officers, for the general public and most importantly with this for people that are at risk of being flooded. So it's very much a looking forward approach that I would like to take. Obviously, we're going to have to look back to see where lessons can be learned and we also need to make sure that people understand from those lessons learn what what statutory duties are really and that what we're here to do. So if that's okay with everybody, I'll just ask Laura to put the presentation up on the screen. Is that okay with everybody? Does that meet with expectations?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Elliot, thank you, thank you. I am also just conscious that I'm hoping everybody's well. Covid is is still well and truly with us and that's why we're on we're on the Zoom call at the minute. And I don't think Chris will mind me saying Chris is actually that's on the call. He has tested positive, but I've told him to sit back from the screen. And he does have a young family and his whole family have tested positive. He's had a couple of sleepless nights, but he speaking to me this morning, he said that he really wanted to make sure that he could contribute as best he could to this meeting. He didn't want to cry off, so.
No, thanks, thanks, Chris, for that.
Go easy on all of us, but most importantly, go easy on Chris. Okay.
So Laura, could you? I'm going to pass over the host to Laura so that you can share your screen now. So I'm going to pass that over to you, Laura.
Thank you. That was just going to be my question. Right. Okay, can you let me know if you can all see that?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Brilliant, fantastic. Okay, over to you, Marcus.
All right. Thanks, Laura. So as as we said today, we have spent a bit of time putting this presentation together. We've had one, we'd already done a lot of it by the time we came to getting the agenda questions from yourselves. So we have rejigged it a little bit and we're hoping that it will answer some of the questions. Very clearly it won't. It won't answer the detail on some of those questions, but we can look at the way for dealing with that going forward. So this is a meeting with the Lead Local Flood Authority, which is Lancashire County Council. And we're meeting today with representatives of Bersko Town Council. I'm correcting that, aren't I? I'm in the right place, thank you.
And BFG.
And the bit, sorry.
And the BFG, Bersko Flood Group.
Right, okay, yeah. But we are meeting with the town council today, aren't we? We have got.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the Bersko Flood Group. Okay, thank you. Next slide, please, Laura. So what I wanted to just do first was in by way of welcomes and introductions, just go through who we are, ask people to to say who they are, what they do, what their experience is. So you get to know the people a little bit. If it's all right with yourselves, I'd like yourselves then to just just do the same, certainly for my benefit, because I don't think I've I've had the opportunity to meet many of you before. So I'll start with myself. I know that's rude, but I will do. My name is Marcus Lee. I'm the Highways Service Manager for Infrastructure at the County Council. Now, what that means is I've got a number of teams within my remit. And one of those teams being the flood risk Lead Local Flood Authority. I'm not a flood risk expert. I am a construction manager through and through, starting off with anyway. I've worked in both the private sector and the public sector. I've got 40 years experience when I add it all up, which is a bit scary really. And I do know quite a bit about flood, but I'm not an expert like the members of the panel that are here from County Council. But what I can do is see when what needs doing and where in different teams. And I do understand how drainage works and floods being involved with construction. Okay, so that's a little bit about myself. Could I ask Rachel just to introduce herself, please?
Yes, and good morning, everybody. I've met most of you before because I've been working in the flood risk management team for over six years now. Prior to that, I've similar to Marcus, I've got many years of experience. I'm a chartered civil engineer and for most of my background, I've specialised in highway authority work, particularly local roads. And I bring that experience of local government working to the flood risk management team. I'll pass over to Laura.
Thank you, Rachel. Good morning, everybody. I like Marcus. I'm new to you all, I think. And so lovely to to be able to to meet you, even if it is virtually. And my name is Laura McKee Ting. I'm the other principal flood risk officer in the flood risk management team. I joined around 15 months ago. I'm having previously worked on Lancashire back in the day around 10 years ago, and then I left for a little while and went over to Merseyside where I worked there for five years, managing flood risk across the the city region. And so my background is flood risk. I'm also a planner, a charter planner. And I'm also sitting on, I'm the Vice Chair of the Association of Civil Authorities as well. So I'm heavily involved with the work that we do nationally with DEFRA, the Environment Agency. And basically, a lot of the a lot of the teams at a governmental department level. And so, yeah, as I said, I joined around 15 months ago, so you may or may not have seen my name on some bits and pieces. And I'll hand over now to Chris, who's who's within my unit within the team and to explain what he does.
Thanks, Laura. Hello, everybody. I'm Chris Underdale and I'm one of the two senior flood risk officers here at Lancashire County Council. I've actually worked within the Lead Local Flood Authority now for eight years and all that time I've carried out a number of different roles in flood investigation, ordinary water course regulation and statutory planning consultation. The focus in my current role is strategy planning, policy and partnership, where I oversee a team of five flood risk officers, whose main responsibilities are for responding to any consultations and the local planning authorities and also for processing consent applications for works and ordinary water courses. And that's about me in a nutshell. So I'll hand back to Marcus to continue.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Jackie, could I just ask you to facilitate the members of your team that are here to make sure I don't miss anybody? Because for some reason, I'm only seeing a select few on the side of the screen. So could I ask Jackie for you to do that, please?
Hello.
You're on mute, Jackie.
Hello.
All right.
Very sorry about that. So on behalf of the representatives for Bersko Town Council are firstly Brian Kennedy. He's our chair, if I can introduce him. Would you like to say anything, Brian?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I'm Brian Kennedy and the Chairman of the Town Council, being chairman for, I think, three, three and a half, four years. And my background is in construction. I was by profession, I was a consti surveyor, worked for various companies, finished up with West Langsborough Council where I worked for 34 years. I've been retired for 10 years and I've actually been on the town council for probably 11 years. Okay, thank you.
Okay, then secondly, the other representative for Bersko Town Council is our Vice Chair, Brian Bailey. Would you like to say a few words, Brian?
Yep. Hello, I'm Brian Bailey. As Jackie just said, I'm the Vice Chair of Bersko Town Council. I've been on both Bersko Town Council and Parish Council for 20 years now. Seems a long time. But we're up for election in May, so possibly I won't be on any longer, but hopefully I will be. And my background is self-employed. Obviously now retired, but as I say, on the council itself, I've adopted various other roles. Was previously chairman for six years. I'm on the area committee for our association and also the county executive. That's about all.
Thank you, Brian. And then one of our town councillors is John Crawford. A few, a few words, John.
Good morning. I'm also retired at 10 years now. I have a varied working career, started off as an electrician, trained electrician with full qualifications and forgot everything by now. I moved into training. I was a training officer with the CITB, which is Construction Industry Training Board. I moved in and spent two years with MX Civil Engineering, so got a civil engineer and the latter sort of 20 odd years, I was a civil servant. I did training as well as management and apprentice training, but I also spent the last eight years as a trade union representative working nationally and quite a few complex reorganisations.
Thank you, John. And then we move on. So that's representatives from Bersko Town Council. So the representatives now from Bersko Flood Group. So firstly, if we go to Bernie Webster and he's the Secretary, I understand, of Bersko Flood Group. Do you like to say a few words, Bernie?
Yes, well, means good morning, everybody. I'm Bernard Webster. I should be retired, but work never stops. And I must probably have more experience of what it's like to be flooded than anybody else in this meeting. So I'm quite passionate, I think we call it. I am, as I say, I'm the Secretary to Bersko Flood Group and so I take up issues hopefully on behalf of the residents and try and keep them informed as to what the first the Bersko Flood Group can do for them and also the the risk management authorities. I'd like to just say thank you very much for allowing this to be recorded. I would hope that at the end of this meeting, I'll be able to let those residents that I'm speaking up on behalf of listen to exactly what is being said on their behalf and some of the solutions that hopefully are going to be put forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bernie. And then we have Gavin Ratray and he's from the Flood Group. He was previously the Secretary before Bernie took over. Would you like to say a few words, Gavin?
Yeah, sure. Good morning, all. My name's Gavin Ratray. I'm a member of Bersko Flooding Group. We were set up about seven years ago by the town council because of the perceived discrepancies between the level of flooding and what was being reported by the flood risk management authorities. That's it, really. Thank you.
Thanks, Gavin. I'm seeing that Jackie's left her chair. Is that everybody from Bersko Flood Group and Bersko Town Council?
Yeah.
It is, yeah, good. John Crawford, I thought I'd seen that name. I was at AMAC as well for 13 years, going back quite a while. So we've probably crossed paths at some stage.
Well, I was in civil engineering.
Yes, that's.
At Langston. Richard Root was my immediate manager.
Oh, well, we definitely cross route because Richard, Richard Root.
Nineteen ninety to nineteen ninety-two.
Well, I was I was there at that time, was up till 97. In fact, Richard Root was my designated chartered engineer for getting chartered. And so we're probably all the same people.
Very much so. Enjoyable time, learned a lot from it. Unfortunately, it didn't last long enough, but I learned a lot.
Yeah, yeah, it was a maybe I'm seeing it through rose tinted glasses, but they were happy times.
Yeah. It's mainly called the Fairclough when I was there.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, fair. Yeah. Yeah, I worked on.
I'll probably arrange the training course for you.
Yeah, well, do you know what? When you said the CITB, that was my first I left university and the first thing they sent me to Faircloughs was the CITB Training Centre at Vircham Newton for two weeks.
Yes.
Which was like a military camp.
Well, it was next door to the Queen. Spend many a time down there as well.
Yeah, happy times. Okay, well, we can probably catch up on those times outside this meeting. Everybody else to death.
Many apologies for the telephone call there. Brian Bailey's lost connection. So could I ask Laura, if she could, as host, she should be able to see him coming back into the waiting room?
Hang on, Jackie. Let me just have a look.
It should just come up at the top of the screen that you've got somebody in the waiting room, Brian Bailey. And then you just and then you just click on the admit button.
Can you see? I can't, I can't see anyone in the waiting room. This is myself, Bernie, Jackie, John, Marcus, Gavin, Maureen Dyipad. Chris, Rachel. Do I need to press? Can you see the buttons on the top, Jackie?
No, I can't. I can just say that you're viewing the the screen.
Jackie, do you want me to stop sharing for a sec and see if you can? Hang on, let me stop sharing. Do you want to take back control or do I need to give control back to you? Let's see if you can see it. I can't, I can't see anybody in the waiting room unless I'm looking at the wrong thing.
Don't know who's the host now. See, it didn't come up saying that the host was passed back. So does it say on your screen, Laura, that you're not the host anymore?
Um. I don't know why I was looking at for it to tell me I was the host. Apologies. Right, I can still share my screen, so I assume that must mean I'm still the host.
Yeah. See, I don't think I'm the I don't think I'm the host anymore.
How do I hand back to you, do you know?
And there's three little dots at the side, at the top of you, at the top of your photograph, your picture.
Yes.
It says make and then you've got the list of everybody on there. So you pass it back to me as host.
I've all I've got on those little dots, meet my audio, stop video, choose virtual background, choose virtual filter, remove pin, spotlight for everybody, highlight self here and rename. That's all I've got.
You see, I've only got chat and pin.
Hang on. Oh. Hang on. Yeah, I am the host. It says host on the side.
Okay.
Hang on, let me click on you, Jackie. More. Make host. Right, there we go.
Okay.
Right, there we go. I've got there in the end. Just pass back to you.
Right, so I'm back the host. So if I just ring Brian Bailey back now and ask him where he's up to, is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, yeah.
Hi, Brian, hi. I'm back as the host now for the meeting. Can you come back into the meeting and I'll let you in? Don't want to hang on while you just do it. Okay, right. So so he's coming back in now, Laura.
There he is.
Here he is. Okay.
Don't know what happened there.
Right.
Somebody's doing the Jackie waiver, I think.
Right, okay, so. So I'm going to hand back the host to you, Laura.
Thank you. Hey.
Who thought we would have been doing this, eh?
Right, there we go.
Okay, well, that's that's that slide done. Let's should we move on?
Yeah.
Thank you. Next slide, please, Laura. Okay, I'll really go through this quickly. Just some housekeeping. I've asked if you could put your microphones on mute while others are talking. I've left mine not as chair. And if you could make sure your mobiles are on silent. We have asked that you let us do the presentation, then we could ask questions at the end of the presentation and perhaps pick up some discussion points then. And but I'm not holding that strictly to the point. If there's something you really want to say, please feel free. It's not, it's a a partnership meeting this, as far as I'm concerned. We could, we ask you to use the hands up function if you know how to. Jackie, do you mind keeping your eye on that? Because I can only see four people with the screen and I I'm gonna struggle to see if somebody's got their hand up. You're muted, Jackie. I can see you.
I can only see five people, I'm afraid, Marcus.
All right. Well, should we just ask for people to say, could I could I say your name and that you need to speak then and then we can take it from there if that's all right? Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Technological. Next slide, please. I feel like John Van Tam doing that next slide. Okay, what what we'd really like to do today is is get across to yourselves what our roles and responsibilities are as a risk management authority. I think that's probably key right across Lancashire. I think it's something that the LFA has not done well in the past. And it creates expectations of what they're here to do that probably don't match what they are here to do or what they can do. So we wanted to really make it clear what the roles and responsibilities of the Risk Management Authority were. We'd like to talk about what types of flood risk we're involved in and what types of flood risk there are. Linking in with roles and responsibilities, excuse me. And as the LFA, we do have certain powers and duties. And what I wanted to do was make sure that everybody understood what those powers and duties were, what other works we do carry out outside our statutory function. And then at the end, hopefully, I've time for some discussions and questions. If we haven't got time for that in as much detail as we would want, I see this as the start of a really good working relationship in the future. And so let's not worry about watching the clock too too carefully. This is only the beginning, as they say in Bolton. Next slide, please. I'm gonna hand over at this stage to Laura. Please, could you take the group through who we are?
Thank you, Marcus. Okay, so in terms of who we are, the flood risk management team carries out the role of the Lead Local Flood Authority. And the Lead Local Flood Authority is one flood risk management authority in Lancashire and will come on in the coming slides to explain more around what we do as a flood risk management authority. What equally is important is is what we're not and what we don't do. So we're not an emergency responder. Instead, we have an investigation role and we carry this out impartially. And we have to do to do this in this way because the Lead Local Flood Authority isn't an emergency responder. So to have an investigation role and to carry that out in a way that is impartial, it's really important that we're not involved in 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 the actual and in the emergency response itself. The County Council has a role in responding to emergencies, but this is as a category one responder under the Civil Continuities Act. And the teams and authorities that respond are those with assets and other things to manage during an active flood event. So for example, you might see our Highway Authority colleagues out who will be potentially, you know, fixing gullies and things like that and that have been overcome with water during a flood event. We're also not an asset owner, so we don't actually own any physical assets as a Lead Local Flood Authority. We don't own water courses, we don't own floodgates, we don't own food storage basins, we don't physically own any assets. Instead, we have powers to regulate ordinary water courses and these water courses tend to be smaller water courses that can be open or culverted and may or may not run dry in the in the summer months. All new water courses are owned by by permanent owners who are the landowners and we'll come into how we regulate these in a little bit more detail later on in the presentation. So this side covers the roles and responsibilities of the flood risk management authorities in Lancashire. So there are lots of different authorities that are responsible for managing different types of flood risk in Lancashire. And each flood risk management authority has a very distinct responsibility for different types of risks and also for any assets that they own as well. So if we can start with the Environment Agency, they are the responsible for just man authority for regulating main rivers and looking at the risk on on that, sometimes described as fluvial flood risk. And also flood risk from the coast or from the sea. They have the they regulate reservoirs and they have the national strategic overview of flood and coastal erosion risk management across England. The Watch and Search Company for the best area, of course, is United Utilities and they are responsible for the public sewer network. So that is made up of foul servers, surface water servers and also combined servers as well. And of course, any assets they own in the area, such as things like water treatment stations and stuff like that. We've got the district and the borough councils. So of course, the Basco area, it's Welsh Lancashire Borough Council. And where possible, they work closely, particularly with the Lead Local Flood Authority, but also with all flood risk management authorities to support local flood risk management in their area. That also the local planning authority as well. Then I'm going to group together the National Highways with Lancashire County Council Highways here into the Highway Authorities for Lancashire. So you've got the National Highway Authority, if you like, which is National Highways. And previously Highways England, they've recently been rebranded and they look after water associated with the with their networks. So that tends to be motorways and major trunk roads. And then, of course, you've got the County Council as the Highway Authority for Lancashire that looks after floodwater and making sure that the highway is safe from from water there. And so that's our colleagues in the Highway Authority. And then finally, the Lead Local Flood Authority, which for the Lancashire County Council area or for the Basco area is, of course, the County Council. And we, as a Lead Local Flood Authority, are responsible for looking after surface water, groundwater and flood risk from ordinary water courses. And we've got powers and duties that help us to achieve that, which we're going to talk about today. Okay, so this diagram is actually quite busy, so I'm not going to go into it in any great amount of detail today. But the key thing that I really want to get across with this side is that there are lots of different people involved in managing water and flood risk. And that includes individuals and communities as well as the flood risk management authorities. So for example, some part of the slide here show property owners where they're responsible for their private drainage. So that's the reef water there. And the downs belt, any paving in permeable areas that you've got on your property. Any other assets that you might have such as water bolts or, you know, ponds and things like that, water courses potentially. And so all these people have got a direct responsibility for managing water and flood risk in their area. What is really important is that we all work together collaboratively towards the common goal of better managing water in order to better manage flood risk. And that's one of the reasons we want to have this conversation really today is looking at how we can work better together going forward. So in terms of what we do, this side really sets out the key right carriers that the Lead Local Flood Authority carries out under the Flood and Water Management Act 2010 and also a couple of other bits of legislation. So to start, we, under section nine of the Flood and Water Management Act, we have a duty to develop, maintain, apply and monitor a local flood risk management strategy for Lancashire. You may have seen that we've recently published our brand new flood risk management strategy, which is a collaborative strategy with Blackpool and Blackburn Lead Local Flood Authorities as well, and that was published in November 2021. Under section 13, we've got a duty to cooperate with other flood risk management authorities and we do that in a number of ways. Under section 19, we have a duty to investigate reports of flooding, which in the opinion of the Lead Local Flood On section nineteen, we have a duty to investigate reports of flooding, which, in the opinion of the lead local authority, is significant. Under section twenty one, we have a duty to collate a flood risk asset register and also records as well. And we have a duty to publish that register. Under section twenty seven, we contribute towards sustainable development. And then the three other pieces or the icons that you can see on screen there are under slightly different legislation. So we've got the under flood risk regulations 2009, we have a duty to create a preliminary flood risk assessment or to undertake one of those every six years. The most recent one was done in 2017, so we've got a couple of years before we do to do our next one. I've mentioned around regulating ordinary watercourses and we deliver that under the Land Drainage Act 1991 as amended by the flood and water management act. And then finally, we are a statutory consultant on major development with surface water drainage. And that was the Town and Country Planning Development Management Procedure Order 2015. So that's probably our most recent duty, the one that's been brought in most recently. And we'll talk to you more about how we do that later on in the presentation. In order to manage flood risk effectively, we do so much more beyond our statutory remit. So that just gives you a bit of an appetite or a bit of a flavour on the previous side of what we have to do. This is what else we do as well, because we absolutely recognise that in order to holistically manage risk as best we can as a leader of authority, that we need to get involved in more than just our statutory duties. And not every leader of authority in the country does this. So, for example, we get involved with planning policy consultations, so that's things like a local plan, supplemental planning documents, neighbourhood plans, et cetera. But we're not statutory consulting, we have no statutory role whatsoever to get involved with that. But we proactively, wherever possible, work with our local planning authorities to support them with that development plan process. Because we absolutely recognise the importance of local planning and the impact that has on the subsequent applications that we then comment on. We engage with all the risk management authority assessments, plans and strategies. So, of course, we're not the only ones who have strategies and plans and things that we create. You've got the likes of United Utilities who create a drainage resource management plan, their asset management plans. We've got the Environment Agency with flood risk management plans, river basin management plans, catchment flood management plans. There's lots of plans and strategies and policies. And we absolutely get involved with those, even though that isn't statutory duty either. We have a pre-application service for developers, which we really, really encourage developers to access to make sure that their development proposal is is as sound as it possibly can be in drainage and sustainable drainage terms as it possibly can be, and particularly from a surface walls perspective. So that is something that we have, you can view that on our website and you can view a copy of the application form and what it is that we ask for if you are interested in that. We've also issued lead local authority standing advice to our local planning authorities across Lancashire and to apply this to minor planning applications. We are not statutory consulting on minor applications. We get around 800 majors a year, as it is. At minors on top of that would be absolutely a phenomenal amount of applications and it is not a statutory duty. So instead, we've looked to other ways to support planning authorities and one of the ways we've achieved that is through standing advice to them. Again, not every lead local authority in this country has done that. We deliver schemes and projects reduced for address to property and we also support partner schemes and projects where we can as well. So that's, for example, where the Environment Agency are carrying out flood defence works or whatever it might be. We will absolutely support them if we have a role in doing so. And we provide internal support for a lot of other service areas within the county councils, such as our highway teams, our estate teams, our planning teams, our ecology teams, lots of other areas of work. And where there's that sort of cross 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 service working, if you like. We support communications in the county council and we proactively get involved with the production of useful information for our communities. And a really good example of this is actually the flood hub website. So if you don't already know about the flood hub, it's thefloodhub.co.uk, fantastic website. We partially fund that through the local levy that we pay to the Regional Flood and Coast Committee every year. And we do, we sit on the, what can I call it, like the website group that develops and maintains the website. And we proactively contribute towards the production of material for that. And so that just gives you a flavour of what else we do beyond what we have to do. We do a hell of a lot more because we absolutely recognise the value of doing so for our for our communities. I'm now going to hand over to Chris, who's going to talk you through the next few slides.
Thanks, Laura. So in terms of planning and development, I just wanted to run through what the statutory role of lead local authority is. What it is that we do and just as importantly, what it is that we don't do. So what is our role in planning? Our role is a statutory consultant for major developments with surface water implications. And the term major development is actually defined in the Town and Country Planning Order and specifically refers to the winning and working of minerals or the use of landfill mineral working deposits, waste development. The provision of dwelling houses where the number of dwellings is 10 or more or where the development is recarried on a site that's more than half hectare in size. The provision of a building where the floor space to be created is 1,000 square metres or more or any development on the site that's one hectare, more than one hectare in size. Where one or more of those criteria trigger then and where, in the opinion of the local planning authority, the site has surface water implications. Then the local planning authority will then formally consult us on the development proposal. And our statutory remit in planning is surface water only and it's in that capacity that we'll provide our comments to local planning authority. When considering an application, we'll look at the surface water flood risk to and from the development, which is normally informed by site specific flood risk assessment where one is required under national planning policy framework. We'll also look at the surface water stainless drainage strategy for the site, including things like the surface water runoff rates and volumes, the surface water runoff destinations, the onsite surface water storage requirements and any allowances for future climate change and urban creep. And as you can see on the slide there, we process around 800 planning consultations each year with a workload distributed across five flood risk officers. And when consulted, we have a 21 day timescale for providing our response. Come on, next slide, please, Laura. So what is what is it that we do? We assess applications against national and local planning policy guidance and standards, supporting the adoption of the North West Suts Pro forma through the local planning authority validation checklist. We provide written substantive responses to all local planning authorities with copies of our responses published on the local planning authority website. And in terms of a substantive response, that can either be that we've got no comments to make on the development. We may have no objection to the development, either subject to or not subject to recommended planning conditions. Or we may object to the development with our reasons for objection and ways to overcome our objection if they can be overcome listed in our response. We also assist with the discharge of surface water planning conditions which we've recommended or surface water drainage conditions that were previously recommended by the Environment Agency pre LFA. What is it we don't do? We don't determine planning applications and we don't discharge or enforce planning conditions. Only the local planning authority has has powers to do that. We don't approve surface water stainless drainage strategies or site specific flood risk assessments. And whilst we do comment on them, our comments are only advisory and it's the decision of the local planning authority whether our recommendations are taken forward. It's ultimately the responsibility of the local planning authority to approve or otherwise any surface water stainless drainage strategy associated with that development. We also don't comment on other sources of flooding such as fluvial flooding, coastal flooding, sewer flooding, groundwater flooding or highway flooding and assets. And we don't assist with the discharge of planning conditions which we've not recommended, including any surface water conditions that was recommended by any of the other consultants. Next slide, please. Okay, so the next thing I wanted to run through is our role in ordinary water course regulation. I'm going to quickly run through our role in ordinary water course consenting. I'm going to hand over to colleague Rachel, who'll take you through our role in ordinary water course enforcement. So what is our role in ordinary water course consenting? And simply put, our role is to process consent applications for works to ordinary water courses. It sounds simple, but it's not actually that simple. As not every piece of work on an ordinary water course actually requires our consent. The tasks works that do require our consent, they're specifically listed in the Land Drainage Act and they include works to erect, raise or alter mill downs, weeds and other like obstructions to the flow of an ordinary water course. And works to erect new culverts or alter existing culverts in a manner that would be likely to affect the flow of an ordinary water course. So it's actually quite a narrow remit. All the works that fall outside what's listed in the Land Drainage Act, they don't require our consent as lead local authority. Nor the works on main rivers which are separately regulated by the Environment Agency. And again, as you can see on that slide, we process around 185 consent applications each year. And we have a two month timescale to return our decisions once the application's been made and any payments been received. Next slide. Okay, so now I'm going to hand over to Rachel, who'll take you through our role in ordinary water course enforcement.
Thanks very much, Chris. Colleagues around the table, the reason I'm picking up this particular point is because I steer our response to enforcement of the ordinary water courses. So if you have any questions about this particular topic, I'll be answering. In terms of enforcing free flow of water in the ordinary water courses, the Land Drainage Act gives us permissive powers to pursue riparian owners where there's any damaged or defective water courses. Where works of a particular sort have been carried out without our prior consent or outside the conditions we might have applied to consent. And where works are needed to maintain flow in an ordinary water course. And that particularly relates to the circumstances where a water course has been blocked. And that is most obvious where water courses are open, that are streams or or land drains visible on the surface. More difficult to establish where there might be a culvert underground and in order to achieve the proper response there, we might investigate a short distance until we can understand exactly the nature of the blockage takes. Laura, could we have the next slide, please? Thank you. So a bit the way, a bit the same way that Chris has described what we do and don't do in regard to planning. I just wanted to flag up for you what we do and don't do in regard to regulating ordinary water courses. We do have almost endless conversations with some landowners to resolve their issues informally. We do try to help them stay outside of the paperwork because it's time consuming and expensive for them as well as for ourselves. And quite often, we can negotiate what it is that they're wanting to achieve without compromising flows in the water course. We will always give priority for our time and attention to the most urgent and extensive problems that might be reported to us. We do have powers to enter private land to investigate where necessary. We have used those powers from time to time where there's been perhaps a difficulty with a landowner. And we do have the the power to carry out works where the landowner fails to respond to our information, advice and ultimately our formal legal notices. Only after all other options have been exhausted and only where we've got the opportunity to recover our costs from that landowner and his default. And then the list of things we don't do. We, as a lead local foot authority, don't carry out routine maintenance of ordinary water courses. So we're not going around de-silting or de-vegetating streams, watercourses, field drains and land drains in Lancashire. That is the responsibility of the riparian owner. And we are starting to promote that fact as loudly and as clearly and as simply as we can across Lancashire. We are using the flood hub or rather our ideas align with the flood hub. They are running some short campaigns over the next couple of years to explain what landowners' responsibilities are and we're we're piggybacking on that work and giving them some material to use. We don't go in heavy handed. That's not the way the county council wants to have relationships with our residents, our business owners, farmers. We want to engage, we want to explain where we find things going wrong and encourage a more systemic and long lasting, enduring appropriate response from the landowners. We will only take formal enforcement action as a last resort. And we don't respond to every blockage or incident of unconsented work. We are very aware of the wider environmental issues where upstream of a settlement like Bersko, we might want to encourage what we call natural flood management, slow the flow techniques, where the land is actively encouraged to become more boggy with the use of strategic leaky dams or soil aeration or diversions in some cases. We don't mediate between neighbouring landowners where they have a disagreement between each other. That isn't the best use of the county councils' resources. There are plenty of other ways in which neighbours can discuss and settle differences of opinion between them. We might call that a civil matter. And there is, just in anticipation of those difficulties, that the English legal system actually has a whole tribunal process available for settling those matters outside of the courts. We don't have powers to take enforcement action on the main rivers where the Environment Agency has a regulation responsibility. We don't have powers to take enforcement action on sewers which belong to the water companies. Highway drains, of course, are looked after by our colleagues in Lancashire County Highway Service. And we don't have powers to take enforcement action on the private drainage associated with houses and buildings. So we won't enter private land to get involved in your gutters and downspouts and washing machine drainage. Next slide, please, Laura. This is a very important area investigation for our team. The section nineteen investigations are triggered under very specific circumstances. And I know that we've rehearsed this story with with some of you over the last few years. Our role is very clearly set out in the flood and water management act. On becoming aware of a flood, and flood is quite tightly defined. We must, to the extent that we consider it necessary or appropriate, investigate which risk management authorities have a function relating to that flood event. And whether those functions have been exercised in response to that flooding event. And because each of those words is really very important and carries quite significant responsibilities for everybody involved. The county council's policy has established what constitutes a flood and what we consider necessary or appropriate flooding for our investigations under this particular rule. The triggers are internal flooding to five or more residential properties in close proximity in one flood event. And that can introduce some discussions over what constitutes internal flooding. For the purposes of the county council, internal flooding is habitable rooms. So it would be a kitchen, a bedroom, a dining room, a sitting room. It wouldn't necessarily be a cellar. Unless the cellar had been converted under building regs to a habitable room. It wouldn't be a garage or a greenhouse or a garden or a drive. We won't trigger a section nineteen investigation under the circumstances where it's what we call external flooding. We also recognise that some homes have been flooded, smaller quantities of houses, but repeatedly over a longer period of time. That might trigger a section nineteen investigation. And we also respect that our business and commercial premises are in need of similar attention. Critical infrastructure might need better defining. What we're talking about here is critical infrastructure that provides public services. We've got a little picture of an electricity pile on there, but it could very well be a main highway. It could very well be pumping stations, water treatment works, library, schools often crop up under that particular category. We will also carry out a section nineteen investigation where there might be specific health and safety concerns. We did very sadly lose a life in a flooding event in Rossendale some years ago. Fortunately, we've not had such severe flooding since, but that's the sort of thing that would certainly trigger a section nineteen investigation, even if the other triggers weren't hit. And we also recognise that there might be ambiguity around the source or responsibility of a flood. Particularly in the more complex events where you might see water coming from the highway drainage, from the sewers, from rivers and watercourses and off private land all at the same time. It can be very difficult to to negotiate which risk management authorities had a role. So under those circumstances, we may also trigger a section nineteen investigation. Laura, could I have the next slide, please? Thank you. We do, as part of our section nineteen investigations, request information from third parties. And they are obliged to provide that information to us. We do collaborate and share information on what we find and what they know with the other drainage authorities, the other flood risk management authorities. We do provide advice and help communities find access to support where they might benefit from property level protection, where they might benefit from understanding for themselves the risks their property is at and what they might be able to do for themselves. And we do, we may very well investigate through a section nineteen process any flood incident that doesn't meet our criteria if, for reasons we've not anticipated, we find that we really need to, we need to understand what's going on. And our communities would value our information and advice, provided that we've got resources available. Very unfortunately, during the 2020 and 2021, Lancashire has been hit by multiple flooding incidents, which has set back our programme of progressing our investigations. So we recognise that we are behind. And that's only picking up the investigations that are triggered by our policy position. And that's only picking up the investigations that are triggered by our policy position, not doing any of the discretionary ones. And I must explain, we don't investigate every report of flooding. Where there's external flooding perhaps. Agricultural land or open space tends to take a lower priority for us because we are fully committed to the incidents that have involved internal flooding to residential and commercial property. And we don't investigate every critical infrastructure flooding event. Mainly because the asset owners are more likely to be taking care of that situation for themselves, being bothered enough to raise their defences, make repairs and reduce the risk of that critical infrastructure being flooded again. And we don't publish the results of every investigation that we might carry out. For example, I mentioned earlier, we sometimes need to investigate the condition of a culvert in order to establish what's happening in there. If there's a risk of it being obstructed, we wouldn't publish the results of that investigation. The next slide, please, Laura. Chris and Laura have mentioned previously that the team does progress with projects from time to time where we have the capacity and where we can see a way forward through the competing needs and demands of a locality. The fund that DEFRA has recently made available for investing in flood risk management schemes across England is five point two billion pounds. And that's available until the end of twenty twenty seven. Of course, all the risk management authorities in England are bit by bit drawing down on that five point two billion. I'm not bang up to date on exactly how much is still available for us. But, excuse me, Lancashire does have another ten schemes and projects that are going forward for that national programme over the next few years. And we will continue trying to find ways of taking that investment from DEFRA and spending it in Lancashire. There are two particular hurdles that we have with accessing this money. It's not just free cash for the county council to pick up on. First of all, we have to be able to demonstrate very clearly using treasury rules that the investment made will unlock benefits that exceed the investment. So we have to be able to demonstrate that cost benefits equation is very much going to release improvements. Those improvements can be a reduction in cost to the householders, it can be a reduction in cost to the emergency services response. It can be a reduction in disruption to business proceedings. Those are the, those are the costs. If we can demonstrate how we reduce those costs, then we are entitled to apply for the funds. The second hurdle that we also have to pass is that we have to be able to demonstrate that between five and fifteen percent of the cost of the project is being met from sources outside of DEFRA. We have worked with parish councils, putting their small investment into some of our projects of this nature. Because there's been a bit of protection for their playground equipment, for example. One of the most complex projects that, actually the Environment Agency is leading on, but the county council is drawn in. At the moment is defences to the river Ribble through Preston South Ribble. Where the Environment Agency have been able to secure investment from businesses that will get the benefit from that scheme in due course. From Department for Transport, because it will reduce flooding to the M six motorway junction thirty one at the Tickle Trout. From the Department for Education because of the reduction in flooding to schools and disruption to children's education. And there's also been an investment from Sport England because of the opportunity to improve school playing fields. That has to be the norm for accessing this investment programme. We will not get DEFRA funding unless we're able to demonstrate that other parties are equally bought in to the projects. And inevitably that slows us down and we can't necessarily move as local people would like. But I wanted to assure you that the county council looks for all opportunities for funding our improvements around Lancashire. Laura, the next ski, the next slide I think is for yourself to pick up on. Thank you for listening to me and Jackie.
Hi, thank you, Rachel. Okay, so making space of water meetings are something that Bersko Flood Group and the town council have asked us about, both in the draft agenda that came through and also previously, we are very aware of that. And so what are they? Well, the multi-agency meetings are flood risk management authorities. And these meetings are very much a routine part of flood risk management in the North West. So they're not something that is unique to Lancashire. We have them in Merseyside, we have them in Cumbria, we have them in Greater Manchester and in Cheshire as well. And it's our regional flood and coastal committee that asks us, as flood risk management authorities, to participate in partnership working through this means. What do we do with the meetings? Well, we discuss operational flooding issues that are happening on the ground. So it's not about development, it's not about strategic stuff, it's not about big picture, where are we going, how are we getting there? It's very much about, Mrs Smith has got a problem at number one, two, three, Water Lane or whatever it might be. It's very much that, that level of conversation. The flood risk management authorities present at those meetings work together to address or alleviate flooding issues or alleviate local issues on the ground. And they do that by sharing information and best practice about what is going on and what they do now. And then if there's something that we don't know, then that is where we will look together to work together to look at doing an investigation. And it doesn't mean an investigation by the lead local flood authority every single time. It may mean an investigation as Rachel described by the asset owner. So for example, it could be an ice utility is going out and camera in their sewer. Or it could be the Environment Agency going out and checking some flat valves. It could be our own highway authority going out and checking the gullies. It just depends on the nature of the issue as to what action is required to address that. What's really important is that the issues that are taken to making space of water are issues that the flood risk management authorities are unable to resolve on their own. So for example, if we've got, let's say, a sewer that for some reason is unable to to be fixed or there's a flood initiative upstream or downstream from that and you know, utilities have have exhausted their avenue of investigation, they will bring that along to the meeting to say, what else do you know? Do you know anything else? Is there an integrated problem here that we need to address collaboratively as partners? And that's where the, the sort of, that I call it the path, the partnership added value, the added volume of working together on such issues like that comes into play. There's also obviously, as Rachel has just described there with the FSR investment programme, there's obviously opportunities to identify potential funding and joint working opportunities there as well. So where they arise and where it's cost beneficial to put something forward, of course, that is always put forward by the relevant flood risk management authority. Again, not always the lead local flood authority. There's also an opportunity to report and or escalate operational matters to the partnership and to the regional committee, particularly wherever it becomes a matter of principle. So that is something that we do proactively encourage all making space of water meetings across Lancashire. So that's not just the county councils, that's also Blackpool and Blackburn. And also within the other partnership areas that are described there, Cumbria, Manchester, Cheshire and Merseyside as well. Have exactly the same principle around processes and procedure of escalation there as well. So again, this is not something that is unique to Lancashire. And finally, we are trying to achieve consistency across with all making space of water meetings across Lancashire, recognising that there are a couple of sort of unique ones there, Wye being one example, which I know you are all aware of. And we'll come on to that a little bit later. What making space of water isn't, it's not a public meeting, the very technical meetings. Where we discuss sensitive information about individual properties and about assets and things like that. It also isn't a place where developments are discussed. As I say, these are about on the ground issues where there are live flooding issues or flooding issues that have very recently happened. So it's very much not a place where we talk about development. It's also not a Lancashire County Council meeting. These are not lead local flood authority meetings. They are multi-agency risk management authority meetings. So any changes that do happen to those meetings are agreed by all the flood risk management authorities present. It just so happens for the majority of the making space of water meetings in Lancashire, the county council's lead local flood authority just happens to be the person who's doing the admin, who's setting the meetings up and sending the agenda around. That could be anybody, it could be any of the flood risk management authorities, but it just happens to be the county council. And also these meetings aren't statutory, but under absolutely no statutory legal obligation to have them. But we have them because we recognise that they add value to resolving issues on the ground as quickly as we possibly can in a collaborative way where that is needed. This is my last slide to talk to you about today, which is really just about flood action groups. I mean, just wanted really to let you know about some of the work that we are doing to provide support to flood action groups wherever we can. And so firstly, if I actively engage, we produce some material for flood action groups. This is informed by our experience across the North West. So again, not just Lancashire's, but working collaboratively with the other partnership areas that I've described there. And you can see on the left hand side of the screen an example of some of the material that is available to our communities on the full top. So there are over fifty flood action groups across Lancashire and new groups are being formed on a fairly regular basis by our communities. And each has got a very different approach that works to their specific local circumstances. So what might work for you in Bersko might be different to what works for St Michael's on Myer, which might be different to what works for South Lancaster, which will be different to what works for some of our production groups in the east, such as Woolley. So every, every single group has got a unique approach to dealing with flooding in our local area. And that is absolutely what we would expect to see because what we get in Bersko is not going to be the same to the flooding that's experienced elsewhere. We absolutely recognise that. We support production groups with their partner's fault and resilience to weather events where our limited resources allow. So for example, some of you may receive the emails from the team, Met Office briefings and the Met Office weather warnings in there. When we are expecting rainfall that could cause a or compose a flood risk. Again, this is not a statutory duty for a lead local flood authority. So it's something that we do because we recognise the value to our communities and the support that we absolutely try to give wherever we can. And we're also looking to continually improve our support of production groups in a consistent and sustainable way. And you can find a lot more information on and support there on the website. And what I've included there on the slide, which we'll send to you after the presentation today, is a link to the community webpage, which has got lots of useful information on there for flood action groups and communities that want to bring each other together to help with that resilience towards flooding. There's a webpage there on households, which is how households can prepare for flooding. So that's things like property flood resilience, having a flood plan and maybe helping relatives if anybody in your community has vulnerable relatives or relatives that need extra support during flood events. So there's lots of information on that webpage. And then finally, there is actually a specific webpage on property flood resilience, PFR, which I've also specifically included because I thought that might be of particular interest to the town council and the flood group. So I mean, I do hope that you find those useful. I'm not going to hand back to Marcus, who's going to talk us through the next few slides.
Okay, thanks Laura and thanks Rachel and Chris as well. I hope you can appreciate everybody, there's, there's quite a lot of effort gone into producing this, this presentation today. I know how hard the officers have worked on putting it together for yourselves, but I'm confident now with the effort that the officers have put in that we can use this. This as, if you like, a presentation to give other similar groups to yourselves so that we do start to bring some consistent messages across so that everybody understands how we do business. So I'm hoping that that's how you've, you've found the presentation and I hope that's how it's been accepted today. What we really want to do, and I touched on it at the start, I really want to look at opportunities where we can work together, not just with yourself in the Bersker Flood Group, with the Bersker Town Council and with other organisations right across Lancashire. I want to use this time now, the next few months, just to see how we can all work together. What I really do welcome is constructive feedback on how the communications are going with the flood action groups right across Lancashire. And it's something that I've asked the officers to roll out right across the base so that we can start to, if you like, look at commonalities in where we can improve things. The other thing that I think we would really welcome your help with as a group is you often know the riparian owners in your area and you know, or you, or you think you know what the problems might be and who's responsible for that. We do welcome your support in helping offer and raise awareness with the riparian owners. So if in your group, you could go out and let people know from this presentation what their responsibilities are. I really would welcome that. And I, I must apologise, at the start I was going to say to you, we will send this presentation out to you as I said to slides. I know you've got the recording, but it's, it's sometimes quite nice to have it on an email that you can feel free to share with whoever you feel needs to see it, once you understand it yourselves. We also welcome the group's support to encourage helping those affected by flooding and from blocked watercourses and make sure that they report it to us as soon as they can. It makes it so much easier if we, if we get the information quickly, rather than a later date. The other thing that we'd like your group to do is make sure that you start to raise awareness with, with people through the Bersker Flood Group, through the Town Council and explain to people about the flood insurance and what you can do with that. And again, Laura touched on it on the slide, there's a lot of, a lot of good information on the flood hub website. And last but not least, we welcome your support with raising awareness of the property flooding resilience measures which can be done within the community. It doesn't necessarily need to be a global solution to this, although that would be nice, wouldn't it, if we got a global solution to flooding? But right down to what people can do locally to their own houses with floodgates and with reevaluating where they have the electricity supplying to the house and everything else. Next slide, please. Okay, that's bringing the presentation kind of to a close. But what I really wanted out of this, and I thought long and hard about the best way of doing it. I've just written a few questions here, which hopefully will lead to a positive debate between everybody here. And I would like people to be open and honest and just questions I'm looking at is what could Bersker Flood Group, Bersker Town Council and ourselves, what should we start to do that we're not doing at the moment? So is there anything that we think that you're not doing or we're not doing that we should start doing? Equally so, what should we stop doing? Is there something that yourselves should stop doing? And is there something that we should stop doing? On a more positive note, what is it that we're all doing at the moment that we should carry on doing? Because quite often we tend to focus on the negatives or we focus on an aspirational thing that we can't deliver. But quite often it's, it can be reassuring to people if somebody says to them, well, actually, that bit that you're doing is really good. You know, and if you were to turn around and say, well, this presentation is a real good start to helping us all understand it and we'd like you to continue to do that, that would be really good to hear. And again, the last question on what we can do better. When is the engagement between our various groups most valued? Because there's an old rule in management, the eighty twenty rule, that you can, you can spend eighty percent of your effort and only get twenty percent result. Whereas if we can, and which bit of what we do, the twenty percent that we do is getting the eighty percent result. That is the most valuable thing you can do and it can be the small things that we do that will make the biggest difference in the engagement. And then lastly, once we've had that open discussion, what I really would like to do is if you like, formulate a list of actions that we can take away from this meeting, both hopefully for yourselves and hopefully for the LFA, that'll help feed into what those questions and discussions should be. So I'm going to reiterate what I said at the beginning, I'm not the flood risk expert. I'm a manager with a lot of public and private experience. And I have had quite a bit of experience in installing drainage, if nothing else. I think that's the last slide, is it Laura? Is there another one?
That's the last one, Marcus.
The last slide. So as chairman, I've got to thank everybody. I must thank everybody that's here today, Jackie, and I'd like it put on record that, you know, you've given us the time now and we're really sorry it's run over, but you've, you've given us a lot of time and you've, I can tell that you've been listening intently. So I've got to thank you for that. And over to the group now, I will try to chair it, but Jackie, let's have this as an open discussion rather than, than me saying what can and can't be done, because that's not what I'm here to do. And I can't see when people's hands are up, all of them because of the screen, but I can see John Crawford's hands up. That's no favouritism because you worked today, Mackie, you know Richard Root, but John.
Yeah, I appreciate the hard work that's gone into this. But I'm not convinced that it's taken us forward it's taken us forward the way I would have wanted to do. I work in the principle that if you have to request the freedom of information, information, then you failed. Because if we're working in partnership, we should be aware, we should be informed and we should know. So I feel that is a major problem. I, I don't think you've tackled the, the issues around the information that you should actually be providing. And one of the, the, the questions I asked was about the six guiding principles. Which I think is the basis on which all the organisations, especially the public sector ones, should be performing. Where there's about information about being open, provide information, engage with communities. And, and that, and allow the communities to make decisions. We are kept out of a lot of those decisions. And one of those decisions was when you stop making space for water minutes being published. We weren't consulted, as far as I know, as a community, about that impact. And I would bear in mind that there were minutes available prior to the Lead Flood Agency taking over, that were minutes produced in West Lancashire that people could request and obtain. And they were quite informative. The making space for water minutes, I think, could have been more informative. And it brings us to the question of why wire can actually have those minutes produced and have regional, sorry, not regional, area meetings with the community.
Some background noise, John. I did, I did pick up what you said, but there's some background noise. Have you got the microphone on? Well, that's, it might have been that one, yeah. Thank you.
So I've got more points because I don't think that the questions that we put forward are actually being addressed in many instances within the presentation. So, but I'll leave those points at the moment with you. Because I think the key issue there was the wire setup, which has not been addressed. And the six national management points on flooding risk, that don't seem to be, in my view, it's my view, being carried out correctly. Because I look at those six national points, I look at the two thousand and fifteen transparency code, I look at the Information Commissioner Office's comments on information. And I said to myself, where is all this information that they're saying of engagement with communities? Where does it stem from? And I've only recently found out through my research that the AHRUS Convention is the body that all the points and those documents all stem from. In my view, that's my own research that's brought me to that conclusion. And that is about environmental rights and about the way the organisation should conduct their business. And I, I got a feeling when you wrote to me, Marcus, that you were aware of some of those and you were taking it down that direction of being more open and transparent. And unfortunately, that was the key element I was looking for, a new way of working within today's presentation. While you may have a new setup and a new team, I feel that the information sharing part and providing information to the communities and engaging with the community is not quite there yet.
Okay, thanks for that, John. I'm going to ask the team to come back with, with the more, the technical response, but from my own chair, I, I do hear what you're saying and I think it is important that we're open and honest with each other. I hope I've made it clear right from the start, John, that that's what I want. We're not going to be able to, to have a finished product when this is the very first meeting with yourselves. And I'm hoping that this is the start of a, a process that will, if you like, make things better for everybody. I, I noticed when you were talking about the questions, you said they haven't answered them in full. Now, I didn't expect that the presentation would answer all the questions in full. And I did make reference to that right at the start, John, but what I did say was, I hoped that once you've had time to read the presentation, perhaps ask questions about the presentation, you'd probably want to reconsider and reformat your questions or re, reissue those questions to the people that they should be, be aimed at. And we'd be more than happy to help with that, more than happy to help with that process. But i- if it's gone somewhere to answering some of the questions, then we're making progress, John. And I, I genuinely want this to work, I really do. If we, if we can work better together, I, I, I'll be over the moon. So.
My, my aim is to always put forward what I see and how people react to it. I see it as an educational because I, I have got a degree in organisational management studies, which has helped me and taught me a lot. But a lot of, and as a trade union person, I saw that once management started talking to trade union representatives, the outcome was far better.
Yeah.
Because they've spoken, right? So views being put forward should be taken on board where they're relevant. And I often think organisations need to think outside the box and do a bit of lateral thinking on occasions and listen. And it, it's, it's common sense to me to say, if you're doing something new, look at what's already working. And it doesn't necessarily need to be in the county of Lancashire, it could be in all over England. Look at what's already there and what's working. Why we have a difference between wire and Westlans? And so far, I've not got to the, the bottom of the, the right expl- explanation for why that has been allowed to happen. I've had hints, I've had your comments as well. But I do not understand Westlans view yet, as to the decision they made. And that to me is a key element that we have to address.
Yeah. Thanks, John. I'll, I'll pick that up again if that's okay with the rest of my team. Thanks, John. I'll, I'll pick that up. I mean, I'm, I'm really pleased to hear you use the terms you want to look at it going forward and, and we must have been on the same course at some stage because what I've been saying to Rachel, Laura, Chris and the wider team below them is this is about going forward. I do not want, we will waste time and energy if we still keep going over old ground. Because if we go over old ground, we're just going to get entrenched in historical facts. And, and there's one thing for sure, what's gone in the past has gone now. That's only in people's memories. It's, it's not real, that's just today here and now that's real. But we can learn from what's gone on in the past. We can certainly learn from our mistakes as an LFA. We can learn from people's misunderstanding. So I, I would say going forward, we, we is what I'd like to hear. But there's too many similarities here, John. I'm also a member of the trade union. I'm not a rep, but I'm, I'm probably one of the few senior members that's, that I, I do believe that trade unions are, have a really, really important part, part to play. And, and if you've ever heard me in the construction teams that I've managed, I always say work with the unions because if you work with them, you'll, you'll get better than hitting them head on. So we're, we're, we're meeting there. With, in terms of wire, without looking back too much, I keep saying to my team, I want to see a McDonald's approach to everything we do. So, and that, that might sound a bit prass, but, but if we can have the same McDonald's, no matter where we are, whether you're in Wire, Bersko, Paddeham, Wally, it's got to help the councils, it's got to help the offices, it's got to help members of town councils and it's got to help the general public. Because what I don't want to see is someone ordering a Big Mac in Lancaster and it's got twice as much relish as you get in Paddeham. That's not acceptable. We've got to get it consistent. And that's one of the things, that's part of this, if you like, process that we're going through with yourselves now. You've also touched on something else that's really close to my heart, which is the national picture. And, and I can assure you that at the moment Lancashire is going leaps and bounds in being part of the forefront of the national picture. One of the first appointments I made when I got this job last year was, well, I restructured the team and I, I I put an advert out for a principal officer. Laurie McKeating came along and took that. She's actually the, now the Vice Chair of the Association of Suds Authorities nationally. So we're right up there dealing with DEFRA, she's right up there making sure that we're at the forefront. And there's one thing's for sure, that, that Lancashire is probably one of the leading Suds authorities now. There's a lot of work going on that I probably don't understand and I, the team could explain in more detail. Could I, could I hand over to Laura just to explain that a little bit more? Would that be all right, John?
Yes, fine.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Marcus, John as well for your questions there and absolutely support everything that you and Marcus have said there about welcoming change. I'm absolutely welcome change as well. And I've been delivering within the team quite a large change management programme to turn a number of things into a more positive light. And one of those is partnership working and includes the making space of water side of things, absolutely. And the frustrations that I think that, 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 I think it's fair to say that you have with making space of water, you're not alone in feeling some of those frustrations. And it's something that our external scrutiny committee picked up on and made a recommendation to look at for, for the team, the, the lead local flood authority, collaboratively with the other flood management authorities to look at how we can communicate from making space of water with our production groups and other interested communities. So that is a piece of work that the team will be looking into probably late this year, if not next year, just due to wire programming and all the priorities that are determined by our politicians in, in terms of what order to be, that we deliver our services in. The reason why it was different to all the other making space of water meetings is that quite simply the administration is chaired by, by council themselves, John. And that was a decision that was taken many years ago because of the scale of flooding and the impact of flooding on the communities in wire. The politicians, the councillors of wire councils, not the county councillors, the wire council district councillors, took the decision that actually this is so, so important that we need to bring this under by a council and we are prepared to put the results in, we're prepared to minute these meetings, we're prepared to collate the information, we're prepared to host them, we're prepared to do everything that's associated with them in order to drive that forward for wire. And that was a decision that was taken by wire council councillors to put that resource in at a local level. That is why the county council does not do the administration for the wire council meetings. Okay, so that's the kind of, just a bit of background on that one, that's the backstory behind that. The county council only has a very small team for quite a large area with a significant flood risk. It's no secret that Lancashire is very flooding. It's, you know, one of the reasons why, for example, Preston, if you like, is the heart of Lancashire, has got a sheep on its logo. You know, sheep are there because it's boggy, we need the bogginess of Lancashire to power the industrial revolution and, and the wall and whatnot. So Lancashire is, is wet, it's, it's just a fact, it's the geography of the area, it is what it is sadly. But with the, with, with a relatively small team we have for the flooding, the, the flood risk that we have in Lancashire, we, we simply don't have the resources as a council currently within the team to put in the level of, of service that wire put into their making space of water across the eleven, although making space of water meetings that we have in Lancashire county council area. However, what we are looking at, John, is as Marcus described there, a McDonald's model to make them more consistent. And that includes working with wire to look at whether there's any consistencies that we can, we can achieve with, with, with the other eleven meetings as well. So we will be producing almost like a template suite of agendas and things like that, and that will help guide and steer those meetings more consistently as Mark has described. But that is the variation in wire in terms of, in terms of why they do so much more on their making space of water meetings compared to the ones that are administrated by the, by the lead local flood authority. So it's not secret, i- it is what it is. And it, it is down to resource. But if, if, if there are other district council areas that want to take on the administration side of making space of water, we will absolutely work with them to support, to support that. But that resource to get the same level of service that, if you like, wire making space of water and the flood forum has, that will probably need to come from the district councils really. Marcus, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, I was just going to say Laura, that, yeah, we, we welcome that support to do the administration, but to just tie up with what John's saying, that would still be within the, the, the model of a, if you like, the McDonald's model.
That's what it.
And this is where having the McDonald's model has to have some, if you like, parameters around it. Because otherwise you'll get, you'll get some areas of, because of demographics that, that will, will engage more than others. But it's got to be done within the certain rules. So I, I don't see any problem with parts of these meetings being, being minuteed. But we need to make sure we look at that for the future, not going backwards.
And finally, can I come in and?
Of course you can, John.
I basically have gone four points from and I'll begin with the wire. If you look at their website, I'm not saying it's perfect, but it's very, very good. Right? And there's stuff on there that, that could be useful and more productive if all the other local authorities looked at that website and imitated it and went beyond Lancashire and looked elsewhere just to make sure it was right. It is excellent and I can't say more than that. Now, we, I recognise that you've not had the proper resources over the years. And I saw that as one way of Westlans actually taking on more responsibility. The fact that they're a class one responder as well. I'm, I'm not aware of how much to do on that. And I sometimes wonder if they knew they were a class one responder. Because if there's likely to be flooding coming up, the sheer address, addressing phone numbers appear are not their own. So who's there to help locally? When there's issues about locally and there has been, nobody seems to be there. We have a massive problem in two thousand and sixteen with United Utilities and Westlans. The resources didn't seem to be there to respond to the phone calls that came in. The making space for water meetings, I'm glad you've said that because that's my view, Marcus. That there's a lot of things in there that could quite easily be promoted and put into the community. But since, since one of the problems we've got at the moment, and it's one, it's an item here, is that Westlans are going to be developing a new local plan. They don't themselves have a lot of information on flooding. In fact, that one time when the minutes were published for making space for water, they didn't hold any. So there's issues there within Westlans that need to be addressed. And, and my view, they need to learn about the AHRUS Convention and how they conduct their business. Because I, I've got current issues with them on that. But the making space for water. But the making space for waters meetings are about a sharing of information. Now, if you look at your two thousand and fifteen transparency code, there's an item in there about what organisations should do if they've got any concerns about data that they publish and meeting the requirements. You can go to the Information Commissioner's office and get guidance. But maybe it's the staff who are attending those meetings who need that guidance to be able to say what they can say and not say. And I think there's a training issue there needed for people attending on that basis. So I believe I I was I was getting persuaded actually to consider a report from the meetings. I moved away from that back to the minutes being produced, because that is all in line with the AHRHOS convention meeting as a way forward that the public sector bodies should walk to. There is no rules, you're not breaking the rule by not producing minutes. But through the AHRHOS convention, if you do it properly, you may then I'm quite sure you'd be doing it right.
Okay, thanks, John. And I know Rachel had a hand up on the screen, but before I hand over to Rachel to answer the question in in detail, you you did mention that wire's website was very, very good and really useful, and that's, again, it's all about picking best practice from from right across Lancashire and beyond. And and obviously, Bursko, Town Council and Bursko Flood Group is part of that picture that we're going to build that model up from. So again, I'm thank you for that.
It's more than just flooding, you see, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and and my remit's a lot bigger than just flooding. So so when you talk about resources in the flooding team, that was something that our external scrutiny committee picked up on. That was when our exec directors and directors did some changes and I was brought in as part of the team to to rebuild it. I've restructured that team now. And just to give you some idea of where we were and where we are, a year and a half ago, our planning responding to planning applications, which we had to do within twenty one days as a as a key performance indicator, percentages were down at about thirty percent meeting that because there just was not the resource. We're now hitting the high ninety percents are are being returned in time, which is an absolute. I hope that can give you some confidence that the resource has been put into the team to make sure that we can. At the moment, the team is fully staffed up, but and it's a big but for me, that is only the beginning again of of looking. I I don't want to bring more players in and more more departments, and if we don't need it, we're just in a position now where we're looking at what we're going to do over the next five to ten years. So I'll just bring Rachel in who had a hand up, and then I think somebody else had the hand up, Jackie. So Rachel, what would you?
Yeah, thank you, Mark. Marcus, I was just acknowledging that Brian's hand was up as well, in case you hadn't seen that.
Go to Brian next, thank you.
John, you were referring to the response in a flooding event from the county council. And I did want to respond on that particular point, because our our advice to all our community groups is that when the water is lapping on your kitchen doorstep, it's too late. Because by then, the same water is lapping on the kitchen doorsteps for hundreds, if not thousands, of other people across Lancashire. And what we're trying to do within this team is reduce the chance of that happening in the first place by encouraging local people to understand their flood risk and to choose for themselves what they might do about that. Of course, it would be lovely, wouldn't it, if all the drainage systems worked perfectly? But there are going to be time and time again, we're going to find that the piped drainage networks are overwhelmed by rainfall. And the water that can't squeeze in a pipe is going to find somewhere else to go. That is a flood as far as we're concerned. Climate change isn't helping the situation, it's bringing us more rainfall more frequently. And what we're trying to do within the team is, as well as investigate, as well as help all the asset owners do the right thing with their assets. We're also trying to inform and educate our community so that they understand that this is a consistent risk. And there are things that local people can do for themselves. And asking for help when the water's on your top step is probably going to be the least effective thing that people can do for themselves, because it's too late at that point. And I know that's a really brutal message to give, but it's practical and it should in the right, if the message is managed the right way, and this is why we need your help. If that message is managed in the right way, it should galvanise people to do what they can for themselves, to inform themselves and to look at their own circumstances around their home, around their gardens, what can they do to reduce that risk happening to themselves? Like I say, I recognize that is a most unpleasant message. It isn't something that the county council is is saying out loud as a public authority, but it's something that Chris, Laura and I and our colleagues are starting to say to trusted partners like the flood action groups, because it's true and you know it's true. And we need to be adult about it and face up to that and consider what can everybody or anybody do to reduce the risk of that water getting over the top step into people's houses. Now, one of the things I try to do when we hear from the Met Office that weather conditions are going in that direction and there's a a higher than normal risk of flooding arising from weather conditions, is I send a message out to, well, it's it's to Gavin and Bernie now. As well as to all the other flood groups, resilience groups, community groups who've asked for that information to 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 tell you that it's coming and so that you can trigger whatever local activities you might have set up or you might know your neighbours have set up. Whatever whatever you do within Bursko, you've got the best opportunity we can give you to to trigger those activities. If you don't have any activities triggered by that message coming out, then we'll 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 talk with you about options, opportunities. But other flood groups do actually have activities triggered by those messages. The other thing I will do, once I realize that flooding is starting to happen and people are starting to have floodwater in parts of their property where they don't want it, however that is interpreted locally, is I'll provide information about how people can report that problem to the public authorities. But there isn't a public service on standby for you to ring when the water's on your top doorstep, who will turn up and stop it entering your house. At that point, it's too late. I could say that is a harsh message to give, but we're adults and we live, as Laura says, in an extremely flooded part of the country. If ever you remember your water cycle lessons from primary school, we are between the hills where it rains and the sea where the water goes away safely. And we are in the route, we're in the path of that water in Lancashire. And we we are doing all we can and we would like our communities to do all they can as well to reduce the risk of that water getting in the houses. Sorry, Marcus, that was perhaps one one dimension of what John said, but I just thought it was a really important message to give, because we we are working with flood action groups across Lancashire to acknowledge that situation and to put measures in place to reduce the risk of that happening in an extremely damaging way. We can't stop it happening, but we can reduce the risk of it being extremely damaging. Thank you.
You mentioned an area there about this too late. We have a big issue in Bosco in the sands that we're a low-lying community. We get a lot of water from other communities coming through Bosco to get to the sewage works. There is big issues about flooding coming out the pipes, the existing pipes. There's surface water flooding issues on the roads. The there has been a problem with the the number of well, let's put it this way, I was at a meeting with the Environment Agency and we asked them, why are we having so much flooding in Bosco? And their response back to us was the water courses are not being cleaned up and and maintained. There's too much development going on in Bosco. And climate change, these were the three areas that they gave to us. But we're still getting major demands for more development, which means more surface water being collected, more sewage work having to go into the system. And even communities nearby are developing, which are affecting us. I have a concern that when planning developments go forward, that there is a lack of expertise within the local planning department to actually take on board the technicalities of all this that's involved. And decisions are not being seen to be open. And and the community's not getting informed. There are issues there, they're not your issues, there is one of your partner's issues. And we're having to deal with that. And it's, you know, you resolved one of the issues that I had and I had to step aside from, and that was critical drainage areas. Where Westland staff were telling me it wasn't their responsibility to sort of critical drainage areas related to surface water. And I provided evidence from other LPAs, SFRA level ones and twos, provided that information to them, but they still wouldn't accept it. And they actually told me that in meetings, the Environment Agency had never said anything to them about that particular problem. But what they didn't know, I already had through FOIs the information from the Environment Agency and from the LCC to say that they had. And, you know, there is there is issues that you can do your best, but unless you get the partners to come along with you, then we're not moving forward.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for that, John. I'm I'm just conscious that Brian has been, he's putting his hand up. He's being ever so patient. And so I was going to refer to my more technically minded colleagues that know more about this than than I do before, but I'm I'm just conscious that Brian wants to speak and it's quarter twelve now.
Yeah.
And what what I would say to you, just in really, really briefly, one of the points you picked up there was what the EA had said about, it was the ordinary water courses. One of the things I'm taking to the EA and to the other risk management authorities is that I see it as a member of the public, because I'm not an LLFA flood expert. And one of the things that would really make me cross would be feeling like I was being passed from pillar to post. And I think that that's something that we, all the risk management authorities need to together work together to help the public. Now, that's a really easy thing to say, John, a very, very difficult thing to make happen when you're not the manager. And but all I can keep doing is banging the drum. I've got a meeting with the senior Environment Agency. I think it's later this week where that's one of the things that I would be suggesting that we need to, where we can, point people in the right place without saying, not me, governor. And then the the other point which I was going to go to a bit more technically was the LPA. Again, without sounding like I am passing the buck, because I know Brian wants to speak, we we are, when you read the presentation, have a look back through, we have got limited powers in what we can influence the local planning authorities. Now, we've got that across. And again, I'm treading a tight rope here of you thinking, well, that's all very well, say you want to work together, but you're saying not me, Gov. What I'm saying is we need to all educate yourselves and and myself be educated as to who does what, when and where. Is that all right, John, as a really short answer? Because I'm just conscious Brian has been very, very, very patient. Brian, over to yourself.
It's okay. Thanks. Thanks for that. And just going back to the making space for water meetings, and you mentioned, it was mentioned about wire obviously taking on the responsibility of the admin. I'm just wondering, in the in the making space for water meetings which Westlans attend, has any approach been made to Westlans for them to take on the admin side of those meetings?
There hasn't, Brian, no.
No.
No, currently not, no. And West Lancashire Borough Council would need to make, would need to have internal conversations about results in that. And this is what it boils down to every time is 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 resources. And hiring resources in local authorities, as you know, as politics, and how much of these things are political priorities. So that's very much a conversation for West Lancashire Borough Council to to have amongst themselves there. And if 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 there's ever appetite for West Lancashire Borough Council to take on the administration of those meetings, absolutely, we will support that, we will do a comprehensive handover. And we will continue, obviously, continue to attend those meetings as a lead local authority. But currently now, no approach has been made.
And to be honest, I can't see the Borough Council being able to do, to to provide that function, because they are struggling very much at the moment with with staff numbers, with resources. So to be honest, I just, I can't see that happening, even if even if they were approached. So I ju- I just don't see the situation developing into, you know, a situation like wire. So what, how do you, what would your proposals be to be able to deliver us with some notes from those meetings?
On the top of my head, I don't know. We'd have to go right and look into what can be achieved. And and we can come back to you with a more comprehensive answer, I think, if we were to have another meeting and to continue with the dialogue.
I think that's something, sorry to interrupt, I think that's something that John is very, very keen on for us, for us to develop the minutes from these meetings, because I know he spent a heck of a lot of time trying trying to get this information. So even if, you know, that was to come out of this, these meetings, that would be a step forward, definitely.
I think what's important is that if there are any changes to the making space of water meetings for West Lancashire, firstly, it's West Lancashire, we don't just talk about Bursko, we talk about issues across the whole of West Lancashire. And secondly, any of those changes will need to be agreed by all risk management authorities. You'll recall on the side I put on there that it's not a Lancashire County Council meeting, we just do the admin, we just drew that chart.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So any changes will need to be agreed by everybody. And we would need to 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 present those to them, but absolutely completely understand where you're coming from. Likewise, what I would say to you though, Brian, John, everybody really, is that if if there's specific things that you want to know about, if you want to know what what's going on with this drainage scheme, or you want to know how we're getting on with that investigation, just just email us. Honestly, we're quite friendly people, we're absolutely good to work with you, which is what we've we've said continually this morning. But don't feel that you need to ask for minutes to to get an answer to a question. If you want to know where something's up to, just just contact us and Rachel and I, whoever's more appropriate, most appropriate to respond, will be very happy to come to you and say, yes, Brian, this is where that scheme's up to, or yes, we know about that issue, we are looking into it. But please do try and respect that there are controls in place around GDPR and, you know, other information governance to keep our communities, you know, aspects of their personal data confidential, we have to comply with those as well. So Rachel and I are always doing this this balancing job of
Yogging.
Tell you this much, but we can't tell you everything, and that's that's the challenge that we have. But please do contact us if you do have questions, and we will be as open and honest as we possibly can be with you about where things are up to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Laura. The the only thing I would add to that, Brian, is address those emails to Rachel, Laura and Chris, not to me, because I'm not the flood risk expert and all you'll be doing is having me me send them on to them, because and that you're better off speaking to the people that can actually help you. I I think the other thing that you you said then, Ryan, about resources, I've got to say that that you you're spot on, and it's a massive issue that right across the authority at the minute, the resources and the wider community as well. You you've only got to try and get some construction materials at the minute, and and you can't get cement, steel or anything, and that's that's that type of resource. But also the human resource. The Environment Agency, United Utilities, the local planning authorities, ourselves as the lead local flooding authority, human resource that has any knowledge about this subject in flooding, they are not available. And and we've been banging that drum at a national level, saying what, how are we going to resource up all these all these departments? Now, we've, just to put you into picture, and John will like this about the training. Now, we've, just to put you into picture, and John will like this about the training, we've recently taken on four planning officers to deal with flood risk planning. We're growing our own. We've taken people on from university that are obviously very, very bright individuals. They've got lots and lots of qualifications. They've obviously got degrees in in this, this environment, you know, geography and climate change, everything else. They've not got degrees in cycle maintenance. So, but we're then growing our own and it's something that we're pushing on a national front that it needs to be done everywhere, because everywhere is suffering the same when it comes to resources. Thank you. Thanks for that, Brian.
Yeah. Can I, can I, can I just add to that? That's very good that. But obviously, local knowledge goes a heck of a long way. And I know for a fact that a lot of local knowledge is not just on planning issues and flooding issues, it has been lost from our local authority and it's probably the same case for for yourselves. That a lot, a lot of, a lot of information has gone with the people who've left. So even though, you know, you do, you're going to grow your own, they need to obviously, they need to become aware of all the local issues.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other hands up? Jackie, are there any other hands up? Brian, you got your hand up?
Yes, sir. It's relating to one of our questions. Question eight, I think it is. We've put in a flood drainage scheme as our, as the town councillor at Crabtree Lane. We had a promise from, it's purely highway issue, not, not an LFA issue. So Marcus, you, you'll be the one to answer the question, I would think. We were promised to finalize the scheme that four gullies would be installed connected to a manhole that, that we now have installed. And this is back in June of two thousand twenty one. And up to now, it hasn't happened. So possibly if you could take that back and see what's going on.
Yeah, Brian, I know my background's in construction and my background is in, in structures and highways. But I'm not actually in the highways authority. I'm dealing with that operational matters. But what we can do is find out who should be talking to you about that outside this meeting. It's not something that I would be able to answer to you, Brian. But I'm sure we can put you in touch with the right person. If you could send the question.
It's Martin Donnelly.
Martin Donnelly.
Yeah. Martin, all right, yeah, he's not even in our, my teams, he's in the operational teams, which is what I thought would be the case. I can, I can mention it to, to him. But he's, again, he's not managed within my teams. But I will take it, I will make sure that he knows about it.
Okay, thank you.
Did I see somebody else's hand up? Bernard?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, good morning. Thank you very much for your, your presentation. It was, it was very long. It was, we're now two hours into the meeting. Thank you very much. And we're now hopefully going to start speaking about some of the flood victims instead of procedures and what have you. I have a few things to say and they, they're made on the assumption that Lancashire County Council and Lead Flood Authority sort of have regular conversations and flow of information with all the other authorities. We, I've sent you, or the town councillor sent you some of the questions that I wanted to raise and there were numbers four and five and I most probably linked those together. And, and it relates to the, the, the long term historic flooding around Gower Gardens and Alexander close in Beresko. They, one of the residents who's an octogenarian and most probably doesn't have good health, has had a response from Lancashire County Council back in February last year to, to to state that there were going to be extensive investigations. And the, the first question obviously is subsequent to that email being sent, what investigations have Lancashire County Council performed? They, just moving on from that, they, I would hope that Lancashire County Council has tried to find out how and where surface water is getting into the sewage system. And I recognise the sewage system is for United Utilities to look at. But I, not that I particularly want to let United Utilities off the hook, but if if water that should be going into the highways is ending up in the sewer system, then it may not be entirely all of their fault. And so what I would hope is that you might be able to fill us in on Lancashire County Council or Lead Flood Authorities' history of meetings or contact with United Utilities and West Langs Borough Council, who I'm informed have had a meeting in November two thousand and twenty one on the subject around Alexander and Gower. What conversations you've had with Network Rail? Any conversations you may have had with the Canal and Rivers Trust and also Beresko Town Council? I brought the Canal and Rivers Trust and that, that's sort of part of the, the question that I put, put in number five. And it was involvement with the Canal and Rivers Trust because they are part of the problem. As you'll doubtless know, that we have a railway system which runs west to east or east to west and also another railway system that runs north to south and likewise with the canals. And if you have a look at the Environment Agency's flood map, you'll find that there are flood certainly on the, the east to west map will show flooding all the way along the canal and all the way along the the, the railway as well. And, and so the, the canal and railways contribute hugely to flooding problems in Beresko. And because they're, they contribute, I would hope that the Lancashire County Council and Lead Flood Authority would put some considerable effort in to encourage them to take some responsibility for the flooding that takes place in Beresko. Now, the, 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 just taking the, the canal, the canal used to be a major highway or a transport route for produce in and out of, going through Beresko. And I think largely now it is more recreation. And what I would, it, it seems to me that in times of serious flood, partly because you, the Canal and Rivers Trust are part of the problem, that they might actually provide part of the solution. They, I know that there is quite obviously going to be some reluctance to, first of all, speak to these people because they may not want to particularly help us out. But they, they are a major part of the problem and they, they should be part of the solution and they should at least be spoken to. There may be places within Beresko where storm water could be put into the canal and it's not going to be easy. The first thing I expect someone to say, oh, it's too difficult. Well, hopefully you're going to get your heads together and start trying to find some alternative methods of dealing with flooding in Beresko. Because just holding your hands up and saying nothing we can do about it doesn't answer the, the, the problems of the residents who live here. So they, that, that leads on to how it affects residents. They, I don't think there's many people who are in this meeting at the moment who've suffered serious flooding and had the homes under threat. I can speak our vast experience of that and it leaves me really quite angry. But speaking on behalf of the residents of Alexander and Gower in Beresko, their homes have been devalued seriously. Their lives have been turned upside down. It affects their health, it affects their mental wellbeing. And the, the authorities who should be taking responsibility for this and should have been taking it for at least twenty years have gone, gone absent without leave. They, they, it seems to be, well, we'll get back to you on this. And that brings me back to that question. Extensive investigations. Now, unless you're going to tell me differently, I've got a feeling that somebody sat in an office who thinks, let's come up with a good term that we can fob people off with, because I'm fairly sure that's what the people are going to be thinking when they get extensive investigations. The people don't want fobbing off. They should be treated with more respect. They are flood victims. Their health is affected by it. So, yeah, so we need to hopefully engage with the Lead Flood Authority who in turn are hopefully are going to engage with all of the authorities, including the Canal and Rivers Trust and Beresko Town Council, Network Rail and try and find some solutions. And the, looking in a manual of something that you learnt at university, most probably isn't going to give you the solution. You, you need to start talking to people who are going to give you some different ideas. And although it may not be possible, the, one of the councillors took me along the canal path and showed me that there is a large pipe coming off the, the railway into the canal. And, and that's so close to Alexander and Gower. Now, if the, the railways and the, the Canal and River Trust can get their heads together and cope with a solution for draining part of the railway, then surely Lancashire County Council, West Langs Borough Council and United Utilities could at least go and ask the question, can we find an alternative route for some of this stormwater? And so there are really possible solutions. I had a discussion with United Utilities. They, the, the water, the sewage water that goes under the, along Junction Lane, it tells me that that may be removed by a way of siphoning, the siphoning effect, because to get underneath the railway, it must go very, very low. And there was suggestion that it's something like a U-bend in a, a domestic system. So it goes down and the pressure of water eventually makes it come up the other side. That being the case, then there's likely to be some surface resistance. And if there is resistance there, it's going to slow the system down. If that is the case, then would it be possible to install a pump on the far side or on, on either side of the railway to ensure that that there is a reduction in the, the resistance and the, the fluid that's moving down there? And it may well be that that could cause a problem further downstream. Because I know that some of the residents have suggested that's part of this problem with the flooding in Alexander and Gower is it got significantly worse once the Mill Lane construction site was developed. And I'm fairly sure that West Lancashire Borough Council, Network Rail and hopefully yourselves have been involved in discussions as to the problems that are being caused down at, at Mill Lane. And they may well be a contributory factor to the, the problems upstream at Alexander and Gower. But one of the, some of the other suggestions that have been put forward is non-return valves. Now, whether they're possible or not, I don't know. And also some forms of attenuation. But hopefully, they, you're not going to be able to solve a problem unless you can find the cause. And finding the cause of how much water is getting into the, the surface waters getting into the system and where it is getting into the system. And whether that is by design or by some fault needs investigating prior to it being, being resolved. And so I've had discussions with United Utilities and apparently in two thousand and seventeen, they had some sort of high level resolution, which they, they cost six million pounds. Now, I, I'm not entirely sure that's going to be accurate. If they had the, these discussions, have they discussed those with yourselves at Lancashire County Council? What the results of those were, what the causes they found? And on top of that, they also tell us that they've got two hundred and fifty monitors are going to be collecting data in Beresko by the end of two thousand and twenty one. Whether you're aware of that or not, I'm not sure. But hopefully, because you are partners, and you keep telling us you're partners, hopefully they should have shared that with you. Apparently, it's called a dynamic network management. And there are going to be nineteen thousand of these placed in manholes around the region. So hopefully you might be able to expand on that at some stage. Something else that is being brought up by one of the town councillors is the Have You Had Sight of United Utilities two thousand and eighteen Integrated Drainage Areas Report? As regards Beresko and whether that's what, what, whether there's anything that should be shared with the Beresko Flood Group, Beresko Town Council and the residents. So I'll take breath. Oh, another thing, one, you'll be doubtless aware of the NTEC report of two thousand and ten. And as it relates to Alexander and Gower, there are some chambers in one of the the residences on Junction Lane. And there are also manholes which they've identified problems with. One of the, the issues they also picked up on was routing grass. And there was a, a suggestion or a recommendation that this, this be looked at and that routing grass be cut back or, or inspected at the very least. There were inspections recommended. There's also recommendations for the replacement or the, the, the repair of a head wall which is further downstream. So if you're aware of the NTEC report, can you perhaps advise us what parts of it have been implemented and resolved? So I'll take breath now and thank you very much for taking the time to listen to me.
Thanks Bernard. There was, there was a lot there for me to take in that when I'm not a flood risk expert, you'll appreciate that and
Well, no, no, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting you.
Yeah. And, and but what I, what I would say to you is, first and foremost, is I haven't been flooded personally. I can, I can't even begin to imagine how difficult that is. And that's genuine. I am really sorry for everybody that's, that's suffered from flooding. And, you know, what, what we can do, we must do within our statutory powers and beyond, if that at all is possible. I haven't suffered flooding, but I've obviously suffered other things in my life that have been equally emotional. And, and it is very, very frustrating when you feel like you're not being listened to or you're just being passed from pillar to post. So I do understand that Bernard. You said at the start that you were, it was a long presentation. We'd, we'd worked it out that that presentation would have lasted about thirty five, forty minutes. But with all the discussions at the start and the discussions afterwards, I feel as though we've had quite a, an engaging discussion with, with yourselves. I hope you feel the same. We clearly can't answer all your, your issues today about Gower and Alexander Court. Your first question was about investigations and I will, I will come back to Rachel in a second and ask Rachel to, to give you a summary position on that. I'm just conscious of the time. But, but before we finish, what I wanted to do was bring us back to that last slide that we had, which was
Do you mind, Chair, do you mind me interrupting? Would it be possible for me to ask a question or two before you finish and you could?
Of course, I'm just mindful of the time and I should have been in another meeting, but I think this is so important that I would ask my colleagues just to, to, to stay on the call. We're not going to resolve everything in this two hours. But what I would like to do is this, to start the process. And if you remember what I said at the start, now you've, hopefully you can go away and understand what we are here to do, what we can do, what we can't do, what we do and what we don't do. Perhaps we can relook at those questions and make sure that we're asking focus questions that we can help with and where we, where it's not something that we're doing a statutory function, whether we can point you in the right direction as to where, where to go. Judging by what you've said Bernard, it sounds like you already know that what the local planning authorities and the Environment Agency, United Utilities all have responsibilities too, which is really good to hear. But what I, I'm genuine when I say we get our best knowledge from, from the local people. So I just very quickly hand over to Rachel to talk about the investigation and Gavin, I promise we'll come back to you. If, is everybody all right to stop on for another few minutes? And I've, I've told my meeting, I'll be another ten minutes yet.
Yes, of course. Thank you. Yes, of course. Thank you.
All right. So across to you, Rachel. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Marcus. Um Bernie, the Gower Gardens Alexander Close Investigations are underway in that I've got some notes here. Excuse me, looking sideways. Um our highways colleagues have connected two new gullies to the highway drainage in that location. And our team has ordered an extensive CCTV investigation going into the new estate at the back. But we've not got a date for when that will be carried out yet. Then in regard to the potential for collaborating with Network Rail and the Canal and Rivers Trust, firstly, because we haven't mentioned them yet in this conversation, tells you that they are not flood risk management authorities. They do not have the same responsibility to collaborate with us on drainage matters. And we don't have the same history of collaboration with them as we do with United Utilities, West Lancs, the Environment Agency. Um it within the last six months, it might have been September, I think Laura and Chris, that Network Rail um first got in touch with us and said that they would collaborate with us across Lancashire and with our neighbours across the North West. Um because a lot of their um assets are at risk of flooding and they recognise that collaboration will be good for them. And we've been able to make some progress on a number of sites around Lancashire now that we have their staff instructed to work with us. Um and we've got a a conversation running at the moment about Bursko. But I can't give you any conclusions because I'm not actually involved in that conversation directly, but I've been reassured by colleagues just over the weekend that they have further further conversations with Network Rail. The Canal and Rivers Trust hasn't moved quite that far down the communications route. They haven't yet come to the meetings that we've organised, Laura, um at tactical with with the wider partnership group, have they? So we're still, we still have an open invitation for the Canal and Rivers Trust to join us for our countywide conversations. And until that relationship is in place, we're not going to be able to make any progress specifically in Bursko. But we are targeting them. We do recognise that they are quite crucial to a number of our communities in the county, including Bursko. So we will persist in getting them to the table. Um when when is it outside of our hands to a large extent?
Thanks, Rachel. Um could I ask Gavin to come in now? You've been sat very quietly.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much. Right, um. As I mentioned before, uh the flooding group was set up in two thousand fifteen. Uh we reported to uh Burska Parish Council and Lancashire County Council in two thousand sixteen. Uh and it was called Burska Flood Records Report. That report gave very good evidence that the level of flooding in Burska was significantly higher than that reported by the flood risk management authorities. Um since then, that report has been updated about four times. In our last meeting with Lancashire County Council, which I believe was about two thousand twenty, Lancashire County Council agreed that they would start to use that evidence. What has Lancashire County Council done to address address the issue of underreporting by the flood risk management management authorities since two thousand fifteen? And what has it done to use the evidence residents have provided to it since then as well? Can I ask another question before you answer that one? Is that possible?
Of course, Gavin, yeah, yeah.
Actually, this is more of a point. Um. This is to touch on making space for water. The problem with ma- making space for water meetings, when they're held in secret, is that it enables people in responsible authorities to put out inaccurate statements. For example, when I questioned the the downstream flood risk from the Utrine Farm Development, I was told time and time again that there was nothing of concern as it had been discussed in Making Space For Water. I later found out through F R, through F O I, that it was inaccurate and untrue. I've got one. No, that's it. I I realise you're short of time, so if you could respond to my first question, that would be great.
Thanks Gavin for the point and for the question. Um Rachel, I'm probably going to put you on the spot here. Could I could I ask you to perhaps comment on the question? Um it's it's before my time here, and I probably even if it was within my time, I probably wouldn't have known that detail anyway. So Rachel, could you try and answer that? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I'll try. Uh yes, Gavin, uh thank you very much for um the Bursko Flood Group's work to collect and collate the information from residents following the the Boxing Day floods of two thousand fifteen. As you know, we have used that information to supplement or to to it's part of the the database on which the Jacob Surface Water Management Plan was formulated. So we have used that information. In terms of getting better information from the risk management authorities and flooding events, that depends to a large extent. In fact, mostly it depends on affected parties informing the risk management authorities, which is why when I send my messages out to community groups in advance of heavy weather.
Could I brief, could I just
Can I just finish? I'm I'm urging everybody who has a role within a community to to encourage people to make their reports, either to United Utilities if it's sewer flooding or to highways if it's highway flooding. The EA, obviously, if it's river flooding, although that doesn't particularly impact on um your your area of Bursko to 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 a significant e- effect. And water course flooding to our team here at the county council. We only know what we're told in a large scale flood event. Um it's it's not, it's not possible for us to be out across the whole of Lancashire in a major flooding event, looking for problems ourselves. We we depend so much on what local people tell us. And either our residents can can make the reports or you as their local and their elected representatives can tell us. Um but if we're not told, we don't have the evidence base on which to pull down the funding and develop our our projects.
Right.
Marcus finished.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um on the issue of always responding first to the authorities, one of the problems we found in the two thousand fifteen flood was that United Utilities sent a lot of their telephone operators home. They refused to take evidence except when it was phoned through. It significantly reduced the amount of flood reports they got. Uh they have been challenged about that many times, and they don't think they did anything wrong. Um. And it it has to be said that after that event, we gave you a lot of evidence and you refused to accept it from us. I know since then, you've said you've you will use it, and that's appreciated. But there was a big opportunity missed that you didn't put in your S nineteen report. And that made that report very poor. Thank you.
Okay, Gavin, tha- thanks. Thanks for that additional points. And and I think um again, without making it sound like we don't want to look back, we've got to learn from what's gone on in the past. Um and gathering the information is absolutely critical. Um and that's why in within the presentation, we we asked a number of times that you get that message out to to everybody that they do that. Um as far as us managing our partners, all we can do is advise them. Um I haven't got any statutory or legal duties or powers over over them with their gathering of information and how many telephone operators they have or haven't had on duty. And but I I do take your point, Gavin. Um. Okay, we we're moving on. It's twenty five past twelve nearly. Um. Can we go back to the slide of the do's, the last slide, Laura, please? Put it back up on the screen. We're we're obviously where we've put discussions and questions here, um what what it would be really helpful is if we could all go away with these questions and have a think about them in a positive way for the future. Um we've not got into the details much as perhaps would would all have liked to today, but we're not going to solve everything in our first face-to-face, well, virtual face-to-face meeting for two hours. Um but if if we can start to think about some of these questions and then um look again at your agenda questions and reframe them and and perhaps look at where they should be going, that would really help us. Um but if you could, as a group, then come back and and perhaps give us some thoughts on what you think we should start doing or stop doing or continue to do. I like the continue to do because it means I'm doing something right. Um. And that that really is it from from myself for today. That is, this is, I keep saying it, as they say at Bolton Wanderers every week, this is only the beginning. Um and and hopefully this is a new reset of a relationship that's, I can clearly see it's been uh not good, for for want of a better word. Um but I want to make sure that in the future it is good, and I I genuinely mean that. So thank you, everybody, for attending. Has anybody else got any comments they wish to make before we wrap the meeting up?
I have Marcus, if that's okay, just quickly. Um just in relation to the slides on screen, what actions can be taken from today? We've got by Bursko Flood Group, or by the Bursko Town Council, by the Lead Local Flood Authority. I think there needs to be another bullet point in there by by partner organisations or by the partnership. Because we recognise that some of the the things that we've spoken about today on the local flood authority things, the the things that involve multi-agency um organisations, and I think it's fair to recognise that as well. So if you just give consideration to that as well, I think in answering some of those questions, that would be that would be really, really helpful for us as well in terms of structure. Thank you.
Yeah. And and I I guess as looking at what we start, stop, continue to do, engagement, we we can look at what needs to happen next. But please, please bear with us. We have got the whole of Lancashire, every town council, every flag group, uh every L P A. As we said, there's eight hundred applicants, applications that we're dealing with uh and a lot that we shouldn't be dealing with that we get asked about. So please bear with us. Um and hopefully this is the start of taking things forward in a in a productive way. John, you you did put your hand up, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Laura. That was a very important point because I think what we have been discussing today is not just your issues, but certainly other organisations' issues as well. Uh they need to be addressed, they need to be looked at. But I want to come back to Marcus. Thank you for you and your team in hosting today's event. Um a lot of it we already knew, but we've had the opportunity to make a fresh start. Uh and I would vote that you can stay in post long enough because one of the problems we keep facing is people moving chairs. So what you have started to do, or she started before doing, was travelling in a new direction. And I think that direction could be the right way to go, providing everything else happens that needs to happen. Changes need to take place. We cannot carry on the way we've been doing. Today had to look at past issues and get them out of the way so we can move forward. There's a new direction of travel that I think we all have to do, be mindful of what the past has been like. So let's hope it's successful.
Well, well, thanks, John. I'm I'm really, really good to hear that. Um as far as me going anywhere, I I I started in construction for forty years. I stayed in construction for forty years. The one thing I can tell you is I won't be doing this for another forty years. But, you know, I I wish I'd I wish I'd come into this industry ten years ago um because I would have had time to perhaps make a difference and see a difference in in my working life. We've we've put together a really young, vibrant team, John, that that you're only seeing three of the key officers, that there's a lot of other officers behind the scenes. What I'm trying to do is leave a leave a legacy that you'll say, oh, that that's good, what's there? But I'm not going anywhere. Um that this is, this is me for the, as far as I can see, anywhere.
But when you retire, which I don't know when that is, you can always come over to our side.
Well, that's 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 a nice
Volunteers, we don't get paid. We do because we want to make a difference.
Absolutely. Yes, yeah. Well, I'm sixty next year, if that makes any difference.
When I was sixty, people used to say to me, you don't look at. When I became sixty-one, they stopped saying it.
Okay, well, thanks everybody. If there's no other hands up, I think I would like to draw this meeting to a a a clause. Is is that okay with everybody else?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, all right then. Thank you for your time and thanks for listening and take care. We'll see you very shortly, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Bye, bye.
Thank you, everybody. Goodbye. Goodbye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um Jackie, I'm conscious I need to give you back the host.
Okay, so um at the top of your photograph, um you should have three little dots. And if you
Yeah.
That and you should find um make the host my name, make the host. Pass it back.
No, it's not there. I've got um, I've got the same options as before. Hang on, unless I'm looking at the wrong thing.
Side panel maybe.
Is it in the corner of the screen on the right-hand side? If you click on that box first or list.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to find it. Um so I've got basically, if I click on my, hang on.
On the bottom that says, um, well, that's your your screen though, isn't it, that? Um. Where was it the last time, Laura? Was it on the
Yeah, it it won't let me. There's there's nothing there at all now. I'm I struggled last time. I couldn't find it and I can't I can't find it now. Hang on, let me share my screen so you can see what I'm looking at, see if you can help me. Okay, can you see yourselves?
Um yes, I can see myself here on this side.
So, right, okay. So if I click on participants and then you can see my name, host me, I click on more. That's all I've got.
Um. I've notes have come up, um Laura, on what looks like a Word document or an email.
Are you looking at something else?
Yeah, it says notes from the meeting.
Yeah.
Ah, right, okay, this makes sense. So, hang on. You minimise that, do that.
Yeah.
Who's that? Oh God, I've got too many windows open. Hang on. Tell you what, it's a good job, um Marcus, that he volunteered to do this. He's not very good with tech.
Yeah.
Oh dear, that was giving you a giggle. Right, let me try again. So if I click, why? Okay, right, can you see yourselves now?
See you in the little box.
Oh.
Yeah, now we've um
We got, right, host name, there you go.
Where is it?
But if I click on that, all I've got is remove pin spotlight for everyone and my name.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, that 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 isn't it normally. Um it normally comes up at the side of the box. So, um. Um it'll ha- uh is there anything with my name on it at all?
There's, there's literally, oh, hang on.
Is there anything
Ah, there we go, done it.
Oh, that's it, make host.
There we go, if you got it.
Yeah.
Click stop sharing now. Right, how's that?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Um.
Gosh, that was a job and a half. All right, well, thank you so much. Everybody, I really appreciate your time.
Thank you, Laura.
Laura, thank you. Bye.
Bye. Well, I'm down to five percent on my uh iPad, so I'll be disappointed.